Okay, I have some other news about, you know, D Y in general, I guess. Theater, uh, the Ensemble Theater Class had a performance at the M E T G, uh, Festival Competition this weekend. Um, and they were doing hashtag viral is the performance. Um, we have begun rehearsals for the Spring Musical, which is high school musical. Um, coming up next week, we have Step Up Day, where the seventh graders will come to the, come to D Y and see the I P healthcare program, um, the clubs and the sports. Um, and then on that same night, we also have the Spring Open House. Um, all parents and students will tour, a chance to see the school, like classes, everything like that. And then we also have the International Food Festival, and this is all on the twelfth. And the International Food Festival is celebration of culture, um, there's performances, um, all foreign languages, like make food and, and dishes and perform and just celebrate. Um, and yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Mr. Martin, you want to add something?
I did, um, adding on to the, the theater performances, the, um, D Y middle school side will, uh, will be having their musical of Shrek the Musical this year on, uh, March twentieth, twenty first, and twenty second. It's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, uh, two evening, an evening, evening, and then a matinee on the Saturday. Um, so, you know, uh, keep an eye out for that and everybody come and, uh, support, um, and, uh, pack the house, because it's gonna be a great time.
And I can add, the intermediate school is doing the Lorax, and I should know the, the dates of that, but I don't off the top of my head. But, uh, look out for that. My son's in both Lorax and the Shrek, so he's in both schools. Perfect. Excellent. Um, next probably the most important part of our, our year is our official budget, uh, vote and proposal. So Dr. Smith will pass it over to you for the final discussion.
All right. Thank you. Uh, so here we are to the committee's, uh, final, uh, budget vote. Uh, so we're gonna go over just, uh, taking out some of the slides. So we, you've obviously had several looks at the budget conversation over the last several meetings. As we've discussed, we've been really driving the budget conversation from the strategic plan, looking at our three major strategic objectives. Um, as the, as the main budget driver. And here we are on the budget timeline. Today is, uh, where we're scheduled for you all as a committee to take your, uh, vote on the budget. Uh, technically you do all the way, have all the way to the fourteenth to make your final budget adoption. I know we had some discussion around, uh, what the statute says around decisions after today. And I did clarify, uh, after today, you can't make any change, well, you can make changes to the budget. They just have to be, uh, lowering the budget. Uh, so after today's vote, uh, any changes to the budget can only be changes to lower the budget. And those can really happen at any time. This is just a process for notification to the towns. Uh, technically, you could actually do it in the middle of the year. Uh, so it's just, we just, it's a process. We have to go to not, notify the towns and changes to the assessment. Just as long as they're note, there's a lowering, um, the overall assessments. Uh, again, it's consistent, uh, in, uh, factors that have been driving the budget throughout this whole process. Uh, as I mentioned, the strategic plan and the strategic priorities. Uh, we're fortunate going into this year, we had a lot of knowns in that the contracts, uh, for all the major bargaining units are settled. Our service contracts are settled, uh, contracted services are largely known. Um, and then we've talked about, uh, the factors, including, uh, added district special education. I've shown that graph on more than one occasion, um, and the associated transportation costs. Student need, obviously, that is our main purpose and function as a school district, so that's always driving cost and our considerations as a budget. Um, and then we sub, level funded the supply lines across the district. Uh, we talked about this year about prioritizing our budget requests. Uh, as I worked with the leadership team, uh, there was a series of requests that came up through, um, each of the departments to the superintendent's office. And then we devised a system for prioritizing that we'll use consistently moving forward. You know, last year, we talked about how last year we were obviously in a different place in making our determinations. And this year, as we're able to move forward in budgeting and we're able to think forward and think about how to support the strategic plan. And our strategic initiatives moving forward, we wanted a system for determining how we would, uh, give the school committee a prioritized set of lists. We developed a rubric to support that. Again, we've talked about this fairly consistently, and I'll pause at any time, but I also, you know, I, I know time is precious. Um, and so we had, uh, priority items four and three were the items that ultimately are reflected in the budget. Uh, and just again, for those in the public, you'll see two items that are crossed off on this list. And that is not because they are not reflected in the budget. It is because ultimately throughout the budgeting process that we were able to fund them through F T E transfers. Uh, so they ultimately are budget neutral, which was a reduction that happened somewhere in the budgeting process. I think it was in, in mid-January, if I remember correctly. Um, so again, they're still will be in the budget. They were just able to be conducted through budget transfers and not, uh, through having to add to the budget. And then priority one and two items, uh, were not ultimately not funded in the, in the current budget. Whoops, was it by that side? So that ultimately leads us to the, uh, large function codes. In the packet, the school committee has a detail, um, you had been given that as well, but it's also, should be in your packet as well. A detail on each of these, um, larger function codes, codes that gives you the breakdown. Gives you the F Y twenty-two actuals, the twenty-three actuals, the twenty-four actuals, the twenty-five budgeted, and the twenty-six requested. Um, so it gives you the, again, the details for each of these. Um, but the, um, uh, the summary is the, and it's remained consistent for the last two meetings. That the overall operating budget increase, uh, from F Y twenty-five to twenty-six is a four point four nine six percent operating budget increase. And then you see the debt service line there, total debt service for this year being assessed to the towns, uh, at four million ninety thousand six hundred and forty-seven. Uh, and that is, uh, a final debt service payment on the high school, plus a bond on this building and a ban, a bond anticipation note on this building as well. All right, to the assessment calculations. So as we've discussed, there's a three-step process, uh, that goes in determining the assessment. So first, we start with revenues and offsets. So things, money ultimately that comes into the district from other places that take off from the operating budget. Uh, so that, um, offset our need to assess the local communities. Then the next step is the minimum required contribution, and I'm gonna slow down again a little bit here, because this is really a, a linchpin in the assessment piece. And then the final piece is, the remaining amount is assessed at a rolling five-year average. This year, that rolling five-year average is thirty point six six eight percent to Dennis and thirty-nine point three three two percent to Yarmouth. Okay, uh, this is the cherry sheet, so the net state aid, this is a new slide. I'm just sort of breaks down the state aid from F Y twenty-five to what it currently is estimated at for F Y twenty-six. This is based upon what we get from the Department of Revenue after the governor's budget is released. So you can see that I don't need to read the numbers to you there, but what you see is the Chapter Seventy, Regional Transportation, Charter School, um, School Choice Tuition, those are all in the positive. But then we also get assessed certain bits as part of, uh, that. And those are, you see in the negative, those are the red numbers in the parentheses, so we get charged those. Um, and those are built into the budget as charges. And then, so you get a net state aid. So, uh, what we ultimately are receiving in, when you take the pluses and the minuses and put them all together. Um, and you see a net state, state aid of just over twelve million, which is up from about ten and a half million. So a sizable increase and increase rather in state aid from last year to this year. Oh, you should also have, um, this, uh, document on the right, should be in your packet as well, so it's a little bit easier to see. But, and I wanna slow down here. We talked about minimum required contribution last, um, last meeting. And while I was preparing to meet, I think it was with the Finance Committee, might have been the Select Board in Yarmouth, might have been both. Um, I was, really wanted to, uh, talk about minimum required contribution and find a way to present it numerically. So I created this spreadsheet, um, and I figured I was gonna show it to that group. It's really important to show it here as well. Um, so I created unfortunately after our last meeting, and, um, so a couple, th- those boards have seen it. But this chart is really designed to demonstrate, uh, the impact of minimum required contribution on our assessments. So what you have here are three different scenarios. And in the middle, middle column is the current, uh, assessment. So you have, uh, the minimum required contribution increase, uh, as it was given to us by the governor this year. So you see for this year, the minimum required contribution increase for Dennis was a little over one point one million dollars. For Yarmouth, it was a little over one point six million dollars. So the total minimum required contribution for Dennis was fourteen million dollars and change, and twenty-three million dollars, um, and change for Yarmouth. This is what has to be assessed first. This is the first part of the assessment calculation. This is part of the regional agreement. This is what we have to take off the top first. So that, that is a roughly forty-three million dollars in assessment. That leaves about nineteen million and change to be assessed. That is the part that then gets the, um, roughly seventy-thirty split at this point. That money then gets divided, the remaining amount gets divided out. You get just under six million to Dennis and, uh, about thirteen and a half million to Yarmouth. And then you get the total assessments. And we have where we sit right now, which is largely, which is a four point five six percent assessment increase from last year to this year for Dennis. And a three point one eight assessment increase from last year to this year for Yarmouth. So then I was curious, I said to myself, well, what if the minimum required contribution went up proportionately for both towns? What if they both went up by six point one two five percent? That's what it went up for Yarmouth this year. Their, their minimum required contribution went up from last year to this year by six point one two five percent. That's the next column. So you see, I just applied six point one two five percent to both. So you see Yarmouth's number doesn't change at all, right? The assessment increase is still one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, I mean, excuse me, one million six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, nine hundred and forty-four. That number didn't change. But you see Dennis's is a smaller number, because instead of it being an eight point four four five percent increase, which is what their minimum required contribution was this year, it's only eight hundred and nine thousand dollars. And then you move down the column, because all the numbers change when that first number changes. And you get all the way down to the punchline, which is at the bottom. And you see, well, what was the assessment increase? Well, now the assessment increases are different. The assessment increase for Dennis is three point four six percent, and the assessment increase for Yarmouth is three point seven percent. All that changed, the operating budget didn't change. All that had changed was the, the, the minimum required contribution shifted. And then I said, well, what if they had been the opposite? the opposite? What if Yarmouth's minimum required contribution had gone up by 8.445% and Dennis's has gone up by 6.125%? So you, that's what you see at the top. You see a flip. So again, now Dennis stays the same as the column before, because that's 6.125, and Yarmouth goes up significantly, because that's applying an 8.445% increase. And you run the numbers all the way down to the bottom, and you get to the punchline, and you see Dennis's assessment increase of 2.46 from the year before, and Yarmouth's increase of 4.17. Again, the budget, in this case, nothing changes. The only thing that changes is the minimum required contribution. The district has absolutely no control over the minimum required contribution, it comes from the state. And the point here, and the point that I've been making when I've been going in front of the boards, is some policies that are established in, by both boards, are not, again, largely, I get it, from the town side, it's their most concerned about the assessment. But in the middle column, where it goes up proportionate, the assessment to both towns would be less than our operating budget increase, because of the, actually, because of the large amount of state aid we're getting, and the fact that we're applying our own local receipts, including $250,000 of E and D to this operating budget. The big driver, the big thing that's pushing Dennis's number so high, is minimum required contribution. And that's set by the governor's office. And that is determined by property values and median income. Those are the large thing that sets minimum required contribution. It's outside the control of the regional district. And it changes from year to year on who it affects more. Last year, it was Yarmouth, it was part of the problem. We had a budget challenge last year, and the minimum required contribution was more significant proportionately to Yarmouth. So Yarmouth got double-whacked last year. So this is, again, just sort of showing how we arrive at this year's assessment, which you've seen this slide before. And then this is the debt service. So total debt service for the high school is the last year on the bond payment, $416,150. There's two bonds currently on this building, and then a ban, a bond anticipation note for a total debt service payment of just over $4 million. This is a really small slide. Hopefully you can see it a little better in your packet. But this shows the total assessment picture, and a couple of different options which the committee, the committee has to just, just consider tonight, and the Finance Subcommittee that just met has a recommendation based on these options. So starting at the very top, excuse me, you have the operating budget. The first number is less the debt service to get you to the net operating budget. And then it runs through this same assessment picture, to get you to less state aid and charter school reimbursement, et cetera. And getting you down to the amount to be assessed, that's the next double black box or of $62,739,11. And then again, the minimum required contribution is first applied, $14,324,779 to Dennis, 20, I need my glasses, 29,556,50,000 to Yarmouth. The remaining amount to be assessed, assessed is the next box, $19,358,582, which is split by the five-year rolling average of 30, 30%, 6, 6, 8% to Dennis, which is a $5,936,890,000, and a 69.332%, which is $13,421,692. So total operating assessment to Dennis is $20,261,669, and total operating assessment to Yarmouth, $42,447,342. And then you see that below that, the debt service breakdown, which depends, there's a debt service breakdown for both the high school. At the time, if you, if the committee remembers, in the regional agreement, there's both a agreement that was made for this building, a 65-35 split that was agreed upon in this year, and then for the high school, it was the enrollment at the year that that bond was taken out. So that comes out to a total calculation for debt service for Dennis, for this, for our current year of $1,448,602, and for Yarmouth, $2,262,046. So what you see in front of you then are two other options, option one and option two, which we discussed with the Finance Subcommittee. And the, this year, the district, we just got our, between the last meeting and this meeting, we got our certified E and D. And the certified E and D was larger than we had anticipated. And so I made a recommendation, recommendation to the Finance Subcommittee that in addition to the $250,000, which is built into our local revenue, which is part of the step-down process that we agreed to last year as part of the budget, budgeting process to offset operating, that we make an additional debt service payment using E and D. And these are two options for debt service payment. So option one would be to pay the high school bond, which is set to, this year to be $416,150. And then option two would be to make, the ban has a principal payment due. So the whole ban is, is a number larger than that, but the bond, the, excuse me, the principal portion is $444,445. And as you go all the way down both those columns, you can see in orange the impact on the two towns. I made a recommendation to the committee, the Finance Subcommittee, they had some discussion, and I don't know, Tomas, you want to summarize the conversation from the Finance Subcommittee?
Yeah, so there was a lot of discussion, you know, there's three different options that we looked at. One was to leave the budget, that is, including the $250,000 previously set. The other option was to pay off the high school, Dennis-Yarmouth High School bond, that was from 2005, that's due in 2026 for the $416,150. And then the last option, which is listed as option two, which is actually option three, would we pay off the principal part? The ban itself is $846,000, but we would pay the principal, which was the 400 and, I got really loud there, the 444,445. There's a lot of discussion on if we would do any, why would we do any, and a lot of great discussion about it. We know in past years, we've talked about not paying debt exclusion, we looked at how much money is in, in E and D, we looked at our capital stabilization and discussed, you know, financially where we need to be. There was discussion that a good portion of the money that was put into E and D that was above, about $700,000 of it was from return on investments. There was some discussion that some of that money was from part of the revenue that was from the town. So there was discussion about, you know, making, giving some of that money back towards the town. The reason that you don't see anything in operating was because if we, we apply any of this to operating, then that's how much farther away we will be next year. That's why specifically we discussed doing it towards debt exclusion. In, in the end, we did take a vote, and the recommendation was to go with what's listed in front of you as option one, was to pay off the high school, Dennis-Yarmouth High School bond from 2005, that's due to expire in 2026. And that would give Dennis a reprieve of $162,528, and then Yarmouth, $253,623. And we would utilize E and D funds from that. If there's anything I missed, anyone wants to add from the Finance Subcommittee? Seeing none. So do we need to take a motion first to move this money before we take a motion for the budget, or is that all included in the budget vote?
So there's three, and the committee has all three in their packet. There are three separate motions, depending upon ultimately what the committee decides. So I, not knowing what direction the committee was going to go, and obviously, the committee can create a completely different motion, it's your all decision. But trying to help facilitate some options, I tried to create the scenarios, motions based upon the different options, so that people didn't have to do all the math at the table. There are different motion options, and I can, I can put them up on the, okay, all right, yeah, yeah. But, but no, there doesn't need to be a separate motion, it just needs to be all part of the motion for the budget.
So Mr. Martin?
Okay, so I moved that the school committee adopt FY2026 budget of $84,438,405, with a transfer from E and D of $250,000 toward the operating budget, and a transfer from E and D of $416,150 to pay the final debt payment for the DY High School bond, and a Dennis operating assessment of $20,261,669, and debt service of $1,286,74 for a total Dennis assessment of $21,547,743. And a Yarmouth operating assessment of $42,477,342, and a debt service of $2,388,423 for a total Yarmouth assessment of $44,865,765.
We have a motion, do we have a second? So we have a motion, a second discussion. Mr. Glenn?
Just first, was your, the Finance Subcommittee vote unanimous?
It was a 3-0 decision, yes.
So can we, and I don't know who this goes to, maybe Mr. Ferris, I don't know. Can we do this type of adjustment to bonds at any other time of the year? Can we only do it during the budget process?
My understanding is we can only transfer the E and D at this time. Yeah, you have to make the decisions on what you're going to do with your E and D during the budgeting process.
Okay. And, and I've always been of the mind, I didn't have a problem with it over the years, that other people did with going into E and D, but I always listened to them. And your scenarios that we did before were, you know, it's warning us about what could happen next year. And so we take out E and D, whenever we were talking about it before, what if something happens? Well, your what-if scenarios could be what ifs. And I just want us to be aware that if we make these decisions, you know, we could be caught short. What is the percentages of, how does this break down percentage-wise over the town's 2.5%? Do we know what that is now, if we chose this option?
It won't affect the operating, so the, the amounts are still the same. So the town of Dennis approximately is $330,000 above the 2.5%, and the town of Yarmouth is approximately $80,000. Because again, we're not affecting operating costs, we're just talking debt service. So operating costs on all three scenarios do not change.
Great.
What the taxpayers, in essence, directly get a benefit from us paying the debt service, because the towns are responsible for that payment. So the taxpayers necessarily won't see it on their operating, however, that money from the towns will come out, won't come out of their taxes, because we'll be paying it directly out of our funds.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Marilyn?
It's my understanding that we are allowed, as a regional school system or all school systems, allowed to keep 5%, up to 5% of E and D. And what is that? What is our amount? And by sort of depleting it, what will be our remaining percentage?
So, so right now, our ser, hold on, give me two seconds. Wrong folder. So between the last meeting and this meeting, our, we got our certified E and D report back from the Department of Revenue. Our current certified E and D amount is $3,257,022. We were, last year, our certified E and D amount was $1,880,905. As I mentioned, we're committed in our, our, our step-down plan to commit $250,000 towards the operating cost. And this commits, this, this particular option commits the district to $416,157, $150. And then the Finance Committee has a recommendation from the superintendent to also then transfer, at a later date, not at today's meeting, at a later date, to transfer $700,000 from E and D into capital stabilization to support the long dis, long-term capital plan, which would bring the district's E and D roughly back to where it would be, it was at 1.88 million, it would be at 1.89 million. Oh, and sorry, and then to answer, so 5%, roughly, it's a little over $4 million of our, if you look at our operating budget, is, is 80 million, so roughly 5% is, is, is 4 million.
Jenny?
And just maybe a finer point on Marilyn's question would also be that if we do later transfer $700,000 from E and D to capital stabilization, that puts capital stabilization somewhere in the 3 million ballpark. So, just so you see the full picture of what we've got, sort of.
Then the capital stabilization is not bound by that 5%, so by moving that 700,000, we'll keep it.
And you, from like a money management standpoint, it, it doesn't earn you as much interest income as well, from, in your E and D as it does in your capital stabilization. Just for your money working for you as a school district, it earns you better money in your capital stabilization account.
Jenny?
For transparency, Marilyn and others at the table, I was definitely on the fence at the Finance Committee meeting about this transfer to cover the debt payment. I, I have concerns that once you make a payment like this, you become expected every year to make a payment like this. And that definitely concerns me. I, I think that we should be saving for that rainy day that I think Joe Glenn was just alluding to by transferring money into the capital stabilization. And, you know, the E and D is essentially, you know, our free cash at this point, and we have a lot of projects coming down the pipeline. So I was on the fence about this. In the end, I did vote to support it. We are, you know, working on our relationship with the towns, and considering the increases to Dennis, this seemed like a fair option. And, you know, we are making a payment like this in good faith, and showing our good faith, and hoping that when we are, when we have to go back to the towns for capital projects, that, you know, that same collegiality will be there.
Marilyn?
Up front, this might border a little bit on a comment. When I saw the new inverse and all of the scenarios, I was trying to make sense out of it. And I went, I'm not sure what it means. So I went back and I said, I think you're trying to help everyone understand what would happen if it was on the Yarmouth side versus what would happen on the Dennis side. So I went back and dug this up, which to me is the graphic that helped. So, I went back and dug this up, which to me is the graphic that helped. Um, and it shows that, this is from February third presentation, it shows the total minimum contribution on a bar graph over time of about since two thousand and nineteen, and then the same thing in a line graph. I'm wondering, did you have an opportunity to still keep that in the packet when you presented to the Yarmouth Town Committee? Cause I can see some of my kindred spirits are in the audience and, and this will be included, so Dennis will see it as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Just a point of order. Um, I, forgive me if I'm, I, I just don't know. Um, is this a public hearing? Did we already have a cycle of that?
This is the, this is the final vote. So, we've had public hearings, we've had numerous presentations, this is, there's no public comment.
Okay, got it.
We've had a motion, a second, and discussion, and if all discussions out, we'll have a roll call vote. Uh, seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Glenn?
Aye.
Mr. New?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Landers?
Aye.
Ms. Venus?
Aye.
And I vote yes. So, we have our budget for twenty twen, FYI twenty-six. Thank you for, uh, Dr. Smith and all of your team, Mr. Ferris for hopping in in the last hours. Um, thank you to both towns, finance committees, select boards, um, finance teams as well as, uh, town managers who have met with us for several months to, to get where we are today. So, thank you. Uh, moving with that, we'll move on to our, uh, strategic plan.
So, yeah, just while the slides are getting changed, I just wanna, just before leaving the budget, I do wanna say that it has been, you know, I learned a lot last year going through the process, and I have been, um, like really, like just, I don't know, more of a personal comment than anything, in that, uh, I've got a lot of support and help and, um, great conversations with both towns across all the boards, across the staff, you know, um, in similar roles to mine. Uh, it's really been a collaborative process. Um, I know that the, uh, comment was made that was more directed towards my role, um, in a, in a positive way, um, at one of the board meetings, but really, it really couldn't have happened if I hadn't had, I said, it takes two to tango, but it's not really a great analogy, because it's three towns, so I don't, or it's three groups, so I don't know what the dance is that involves, um, three, three folks, but it really, it, it's like a waltz. Well, waltz is in three-quarter time, right? Um, Mr. New, so maybe it's like a waltz, I don't know. But, um, I think it, it really required willing partners across all the groups, and I really felt like, I never felt like I didn't have anything other than willing partners to engage in these conversations. So, it's been, uh, I've really, maybe enjoyed is the wrong word, just because it's, it's laborsome, but it's definitely, I, I've really felt like I've had willing, willing, um, dance partners the whole time. Alright, moving on. So, uh, at the last meeting, we went over, uh, superintendent's goals, and I mentioned that we would come back for a strategic plan, uh, update. So, that is, uh, the purpose of this next presentation. So, um, a, as I've been mentioning, we have three large strategic objectives. So, the first is to eliminate disparities in access and achievement for every student. Um, we do that by, um, promoting, um, uh, student independence, uh, we do that largely by focusing on tier-one instruction, um, and, and, uh, in a, in a focus on not only tier-one instruction, but through the materials that we're providing with students, through professional development, um, et cetera. The next is focused on, uh, establishing consistent district-wide systems for support, uh, in order to ensure organizational effectiveness. I've mentioned that this is like the business of doing school, that there's a lot of ways that we can get better in how we do, uh, our job as an organization. And I've used the comparison that we're roughly six hundred and thirty employees, Cape Cod five, five seventy-seven, Nantucket Airlines seven hundred, we're somewhere in between there. And there are a lot of ways, in my first year or so, that I've learned, that we could get, um, more efficient as an organization to ensure that our students are having better experiences. So, this, that second objective, objective is really aimed at that. Uh, and then the third one is addressed at the long and short-term capital needs and facilities needs for the district. So, uh, last year, uh, or, uh, the way we got to where we are is, so taking all the information that was learned during the first year, uh, here as superintendent, and all that data that was gathered, not only by me, but by the, the team, and, and information that had been gathered prior to me aliy, arriving, that I just organized. Um, we spent two days in July and two days in August to establish those objectives that you see there, and the initiatives that I'm gonna review again with you in the upcoming slides. Um, the entire leadership team got together to do that work, right? Um, and, those were the days largely in July. And then in August, we came back, and in August was fo, focused primarily on developing, okay, so that's a five-year plan. So, what are we doing in year one? And, one ye, year one helped us establish, again, what does it look like in one year? If those are five-year things? And then what are we gonna focus on? Because, there's a lot of initiatives, we can't do all of them, uh, cause if you try to do too many initiatives all at the same time, you do none of them well. So, what are we gonna focus on? So, what you'll see over the next series of slides, uh, is, one, I'm gonna show you which ones we prioritized, so those ones will be highlighted in like a bluish color. Um, and then you'll see the one-year action plans followed up, and I'm gonna show you a key to, which will demonstrate sort of where we are in progress on those action plans. I didn't share that level of detail with you when we first came, um, cause I didn't want the slide deck to be super long. Um, I showed it with you, the initiatives, I shared with you the, the objectives, um, but now you're gonna see, um, the, it's a little more granular, and so that you can see where we are, um, in moving some of those initiatives forward. Cause initiatives are still kinda big, cause they're supposed to be spread over multiple years. So, the, uh, in strategic objective one, we had, uh, improved tier-one instruction for every student, uh, through, uh, high-quality tier-one instruction, professional learning, um, and regular monitoring for improvement. Um, and then we had developing a comprehensive, multi-year professional learning plan. Those are our focus areas for this year. Um, and while we might be moving some things in these other areas, these weren't our big focus areas for this year. The first, one A and one B were really our focus area for this strategic objective. So, I'm gonna show you the key, and this is the only time you're gonna see it, so pay close attention. Uh, so, when you see green, that's something that we've accomplished, it's met. Um, yellow is something that's in progress, um, orange is behind schedule, uh, and, uh, red is something that we have not yet started. So, uh, so again, this is, these, we took each of these initiatives and we drilled down to like, what are the specific action steps that we actually need to accomplish in order to get those things moving forward? And then we set time-bound dates, we set who was gonna be responsible for those things. Um, and so this is right off of that action plan, I just put them in the PowerPoint. Um, and, everybody in the leadership team has copies of these, uh, we work from them, we review them periodically. And, so this is where we are, um, working towards. So, that first one finalized the DY D cap. D cap is District Accommodation Plan. Uh, we had one that was probably like twenty years, it was long, long old. Um, and so the leadership team, that DY I L T, the team loves my acronyms, and I, they, to say that with, um, they don't. Um, but, so DY, Instructional Leadership Team. So, I have different groups that meet on a regular basis, um, with different purposes. So, Instructional Leadership Team is, is the leaders whose job function is function on instructional leadership. So, it's made up of principals, Maria sits on that group, but like, um, the business team doesn't sit on that team, cause their main purpose is not on instructional leadership. All the principals sit on that group, Betsy and Cherry sit on that group, um, and there's a couple other key roles, um, our EL coordinator, instruct, uh, technol, not Ross's technology job, cause his job is more focused on the IT side, but we have another assistant technology director whose job is focused on the learning side, so she sits on that group. Um, and, is, I believe that we need to meet, but I also believe in wasting people's time. So, I really try to structure the groups as much as I can to meet for purpose. Um, anyways, so that group, I worked to finalize the D cap, and then we're in, actually just had a meeting today where we were working on that second one, on what is it that we're looking for? Um, this is sort of an iterative conversation, we're having it on a regular basis. Um, I thought we would be able to get there faster, but we're still working on exactly what it is that we're looking for, um, for tier-one. Um, and, so we created a, um, a document, but that document keeps changing and evolving, but we definitely created a debrief protocol. Um, and then, again, sort of clarifying what it is, what the expectation, expectations are. I don't know if you want me to read all these to you, but you, you can see, like, a lot of things have been completed, a lot of things are in progress. Um, we're a little behind schedule on sort of, how are, consistently and clearly are we gonna manage, uh, and review data? Part of that is having a consistent place to find our data, and house our data, and look at it in a consistent way. Um, part of it is, um, determining what are the key things that we wanna focus on? Um, part of that is, like, the schools might know, uh, but then what are we looking at at the district level? Part of it is like, one school might be looking at things in one way or one set of, um, pieces, and not in another, or might be strong in one particular curriculum area, but not in another, depending upon the grade level. So, it's more about consistency than not having anything. Um, and then, uh, uh, and then, I can't read that lot, next one, the fuzz, oh. Uh, and then, I think we have some learning to do around our PLCs, again, making those consistent across the district and how we're utilizing them. And then, um, we, again, we're having consistent meetings, uh, between the directors, the principals, instructional coaches, those are ongoing, um, uh, in monthly meetings. Moving on to the next one, um, the, the first one kinda drives the second one, so the second one, I think we thought we were gonna be able to get into a little bit faster, but we realized we actually, again, have that conversation today, that we really needed to learn more about, um, our PD needs before we could actually develop a PD plan. So, we actually, we're talking today about scheduling our last round of learning walks, and that that will be really informative in helping us move, um, our professional development plan forward, um, as a team. So, this one is, is, had less progress, um, this year, um, than maybe we originally had ambitiously set for ourselves this summer. So, next, moving on, strategic objective two, um, focus areas being, uh, establishing a system to capture and house student data, and then telling the DY story, uh, to amplify and sustain a positive public image. And then the last one being, uh, establish a set of core values that drive consistent So, looking at this one, uh, we made some good headway. Uh, my, really, my only job was to establish a subcommittee. Um, I was able to do that one on schedule, and then that subcommittee has done a lot of work. Uh, they've met regularly, uh, Ms. Pontius just chaired that subcommittee with Mr. Hanscom from the middle school, and they have met regularly, and they're working their way through the process. They remain, um, largely on track, um, to deliver some information back to the leadership team. And this sort of ties back to some of the earlier conversations on one of the other initiatives, and largely their job is to determine where, um, you know, what, where do we currently house data? Um, how are we using it? Um, and are there, whole, like, big picture, is there more effective ways for us to collect, house, and analyze data, uh, within the district? Like, largely on the student information side? Um, but, part of their charge too, was to determine, um, what is it that we want to be able to, um, uh, essentially like, what questions do we wanna be able to answer? It's really sort of what should drive your data look for, is like, well, what questions is it we're looking to answer? Um, that, that, and if, do we have the data in order to be able, be able to answer those questions? So, that committee has been working through that process, and they're lar, I think they have one more meeting, um, and they'll be largely concluded, and then they start moving into determining, you know, do we need something that we don't have? And then, uh, this next piece is around, uh, largely the public relations piece. Uh, and so, we know, we've hired, uh, our communications, the community relations coordinator, uh, so those are the first couple of steps. And then, um, she has been working to, both as an individual and then with the leadership team, to dig into things that exist, like, understanding the, the DY advantage, is that something that's still reflective of DY? Is that the direction that we still wanna go as far as our image, our, our, um, uh, our motto's not the right word, our, yeah, yeah, our, uh, our branding, that was the word I was looking for. Um, there's a, a survey that went out not too long ago to the entire leadership, or entire school community around all the different ways that we send information from Remind to the website, um, to, um, to social media channels, et cetera, to understand sort of a base, get a baseline on, on communication from the district, and use that to help shape, uh, our direction going forward, forward. Um, trying to centralize, uh, social media communication, um, and, and then, uh, but there's some things that we haven't accomplished yet, which is, uh, sort of the intersection between what's going on at the buildings and on the district level. Um, but a lot, there's been a lot of progress made in a short period of time, um, with that position, um, just getting some things moved forward, um, from a district perspective. Whoops. Wasn't intentionally zipping by that one. Alright, and then this one largely has been a failure of the superintendent, um, if I'm being a hundred percent honest. So, and it's just been because I haven't been able to get to it. Uh, so, this one is largely sent, centered around crea, uh, revisiting and, uh, perhaps adopting a new set of core values for the school district. As a school district, we have, uh, like, if you look at, look up the school district and look up core values, there's something there. It's a triangle, and there's a bunch of words in the triangle. Um, and I've surveyed, and I've come across it a couple different ways, I'm not really sure, and I think I've mentioned it here before, it's not really clear about who we are and what we stand for as a school district. If you go to other districts and you look up their core values, they're much more clear about, you know, "We believe these things, this is what we stand for." Um, and I think it just becomes a little grounding, especially when you find yourself in difficult times. It's something for you to fall back to and say, "Well, we're making this decision because in DY, we believe these five things, these six things, whatever they are." And, so, I, I have some of these things done in some pieces, but, you know, I largely, what I wanna do is lead a community effort to draft a set of core values to ultimately be adopted by this committee. Um, it's, it's just a big job to facilitate a community effort, and quite frankly, with some key staffing changes and, you know, I just haven't got to it. Just, I've got drafts of ideas, and I've got a, a whole framework for how we're gonna get there, and I just haven't, have yet to launch it. Um, so, I am definitely behind on, um, as you can see by all the red, um, on this slide. Stuff that I was supposed to have started in October, and it is now February. It's on my big whiteboard in my office, every time I look at it, it makes me not feel so good about myself. Alright, uh, move, yeah, 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 yeah. Um, I can't even point to somebody else in my office and say, "This is your fault." Nope, it's me. Um, alright, so then, the third strategic objective, uh, is developing a multi, uh, we really were gonna be focused on a multi-year capital plan, and then, that, that sort of ran parallel to, okay, so if we're gonna have a multi-year capital plan, sort of parallel analyzing our ability to fund different pieces, and then determining sort of what might be some of other appropriate funding mechanisms. And, this one here is gonna see another lot of red too, cause this one largely fell, um, you'll see, you sort of look down the line, there are a lot of assistant superintendent for business and finance, um, was a key cog in the wheel here, and losing that position, um, you know, made it really difficult to move some of these things forward. Uh, we had, um, we do have, uh, we, a management program in place, so we have a, we purchased, um, oh shoot, I just not, EZ CIP, I think it's called, um, that, it's the same tool that the town of Yarmouth uses to, uh, manage all their capital. uses to manage all their capital projects. So we have that in place, and some of that sort of backbone stuff has been set up. And so, that structurally is in place, but, and then we have a bunch of reports, and we started getting, you know, David had started gathering all the reports to start to load in there and set up the structure, but that's about as far as it's gotten. And so this, this is probably going to remain fairly red, just sort of preparing the committee for the next time I give this report, until we're able to get another full-time person in place to move this, unless somehow, some other parts of my schedule free up and I'm able to devote some time to this. It's going to be delayed, I think, a little bit, by a little bit longer than I wanted. I wanted to be further ahead than where we are right now. And then, so the same on the funding side, you know, again, another key cog in that wheel, was to, was to develop some pieces and then bring it to the, to the subcommittee for the school committee to start to move some of these pieces forward. And that brings me to the last slide. For any questions? Jenny?
Is there anything we can do to help you move some of this stuff forward? Or, I mean, I mean, maybe the timelines were just very ambitious, and you need to sort of rethink some of the timelines on some of this stuff, especially based on staffing changes and things that are going to affect this. I don't know what we really could do, but can we, I mean, do you need additional subcommittees? Do you, like, what would, is there anything?
So, I would say two things. So, one, you know, I sent this out to the team, and actually, if you, if you look at it through a lens of, it's only been six months, right? So there's actually a lot of stuff that's been accomplished in six months. So, that part, I think, we have done a lot in six months. Two, yes, we were pretty ambitious, and so we've learned a lot, and we'll take that into our planning this summer for year two. And I think the third layer is that I would rather we had some things that we didn't accomplish than we accomplished everything and didn't push ourselves enough to, right? So there's like a little bit of a balance there. And then the, I don't know, I'm on three or four now? Yeah. I think, I think there's, there's a layer of some unpredictability, right? Some of the, some of the things that we weren't able to, and, and some things that are red, like, they should be red right now, because they, they're not started because we haven't even got to that, you know, they're like spring of '25. We're not in spring of '25 yet. If anybody was outside today, you'd know that, right? So some things we shouldn't have gotten to yet anyways. I guess I could have left them blank, maybe would have showed a little better on the screen, but, you know, we haven't started them yet. And then, I mean, no, I don't think so. I think from a participatory standpoint, you know, when we get to the core values work, you know, I would like to have some committee members and some committee participation in that. I just need to get organized around it. But I think, you know, you know, and we're still, some days it feels like I've been here for 10 years. And then, like, tomorrow will probably feel like that, when I'm going to go to the Dennis Select Board and the Armistice Select Board in the same day. But, the, really, like, as a team, at least from my perspective, they've, a lot of them have been working together for a long time, but sort of just getting a management structure together, we haven't really all been working together for that long, as far as distribution of work and understanding sort of what my expectations are as superintendent, right? So we're still figuring out how to all work together. So I think, you know, we'll take that into learning and developing for next summer as well. So I think those are all, you know, again, I was actually pretty, when I reflected back on it, I was actually pretty proud of how far we've come in just six months. It was, we really finished this up at the end of August, you know, started launching some of the stuff in September. So it really has been a fair amount done in a short period of time.
Oh, yeah, I didn't mean that to be criticism at all. Like, I'm, I think we're all, I guess we're everybody, but I've been very pleased with all your initiatives and how you've been working through things. So that was-
No, no, no. Yeah, I didn't take it that way.
Okay.
And then the bounce off that, you know, the finance subcommittee has been prioritizing the budget, and we had created a capital stabilization fund, but we haven't met mostly because of dealing with the budget. So there's opportunities for that subcommittee to meet. And I see Ms. Stuklin has his hand up as well.
Yeah, I was, you know, I was thinking about, when you were talking about a lot of that stuff, I, you know, the core values and feeling bad about yourself, but I was thinking about your dance analogy. I was like, you know, if you think about how it used to be, it wasn't Take-Two to Tango, it was Take-Two to Tangle. And, you know, it was more like a breakdance in previous years. So I wouldn't feel bad, but the core value thing, I, I can't imagine what, like, I understand you're kind of getting, hard time getting a grasp on it, because I, I don't understand, you know, what could be these other districts' differences, you know, what, I don't know if it's different from a mission statement or how it is, but, you know, what, what possibly could their identity or their core values be that are that much different than, you know, what we're trying to accomplish? So that, that would be, you know, I would, I wouldn't say, don't worry about it, because you set it for your goals and you didn't meet that thing. But, you know, I just feel like, we have made a lot of progress, and the things with the community are a whole lot healthier than, you know, what they were before. So it's, you know, in the, in the finance committees and the other committees, and the response so far from the towns have been very good on, on the budget stuff. So I just, I'd, I'd like to help on the core value thing, but I, I can't get a grip on what exactly that would be anyway.
Perfect. Thank you so much for that, for that update. Next, we're going to move to Subcommittee Representatives Liaison Report. First will be School Committee Liaisons to the Select Board. I know we've talked about both Select Boards, I know we've met with the numerous. Anything additional, Mr. Glenn, you'd like to add for Yarmouth?
Just, so, I attended remotely the Finance Committee meeting, and then, obviously, Mark met with the selectmen, I was present there, too, but they, you know, he's going to obviously go back to them, so the jury's still out, but everything looks pretty optimistic, so.
Thank you. Marilyn, anything for Dennis? Similar? I know we've already met with both of them, and I think-
Just the superintendent's correct, where the Finance Committee joint meeting with the Select Board and Dennis is tomorrow at 4:30 at Town Hall.
Thank you. Next, we have a School Building Committee update.
Yeah. So the, the bids are out for the turf fields. The PMA ran and a, I forget exactly the appropriate term, but when the prospective bidders can come and walk the site, et cetera, that was Friday, I think. And then, bid openings are on the 12th, and then, we'll evaluate, and then PMA will be at your meeting on the 17th to make a recommendation for the committee to assign a, to award the bid, yeah. So that'll be on the 17th.
Mr. New.
So what do you think the timeline would be with the bid opening on the 17th? Are we looking for the project to begin in June, July, August, September?
As soon as the contractor's ready to go. Although, at this point, we're like, in, probably be into the spring season, so we'll probably start in the summer. I don't think logistically, they're going to be able to start ground-ready. Although, I missed the last meeting with PMA, because, well, you'll see in my superintendent's report, the MSBA was onsite, so I, I was double-booked, but I can confirm exactly, and that's a good question for them, when they come. But I don't anticipate, at this point, we'll probably have to get, although we have made plans for the spring season on alternate sites. We worked at the town of Yarmouth on alternate sites for the spring season, so we can adjust, because that was the original plan, was to start during the spring season. So we are ready to go in the spring season if need be. Ideally, I'd like to only affect one season, if possible. That's sort of the goal, not to stretch it into two seasons.
What's the timeline? Do they think for finishing the project, is it something that is months, two, three months?
Yeah, it's, it was, I'd have to go back and review the, my notes from the, from the conversation, but it was, the largest challenge is the lead time on the, on the field, as long as we can, on the, like, the top layer, you know, on the new turf. Because when they take up the old one, they won't be able to put down, like, you can't put the carpet back down, you've got to get a new carpet. And so, the, as long as, the original lead time on the carpet was something in the ballpark of like, six months, but we've got some assurances from Sprint Turf, who's the, who's the carpet designer, that they, they will bump us to the front of the line. So then, the project scope was originally somewhere in the ballpark of three to four months. Again, assuming no problems with weather and any other hiccups and challenges.
So the anticipation is for potentially be done by September?
Again, assuming that they're able to start right away, they're not in the middle of another project yet.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Glenn?
Yeah, just, I'm trying to remember, what was the last input from the District Council? And, and the reason I ask this, when I'm thinking going forward, to not repeat the same issues, we had talked about, like, warranty type of situations, but we haven't had a meeting as a board with that. So I'm just wondering where that is.
Yeah. So, so ultimately, so the last conversation that the committee had was regarding what you're discussing, was with the current GC on this project. But the committee voted, I don't remember exactly when, I have to go back and find the exact minutes, the committee decided to go out to larger bid and move away from the GC from this project, because the pricing we were getting back through their subs was rather expensive. And we were worried with the committee's decision to file suit, that we would potentially not recoup all of our losses because we weren't seeking the best possible price. So we ultimately went out to sue, well, went out to bid to get the best possible price. So we're not, that conversation isn't really germane here, because we're with a whole, we're going to get a whole different general contractor on this project. It's going to be separate from the GC on this building project.
But is there such a thing as a warranty?
As much as you get on any big building project.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have the Policy Subcommittee, a first reading. Not sure who's doing the policy, the first reading.
No, we don't have to read it.
So it's a Policy JFBB School Choice Update. So it's in the packet.
I mean, we can, everybody can, this is the first reading, so everybody can just take this, read it, go home, read it, see if they have any questions, bring it back to the Policy Subcommittee if you have questions or issues, right? And then, we'll vote on it at the second reading, right?
Yep.
Okay.
So it's, it was in the packet submitted, so it's included in here.
Yep.
Just, before you read it, I just want to point out to the committee that when the Subcommittee met, Maria, Glenn, and I decided, the language is pretty much accurate from what MASC, Mass Association of School Committees, our current language was up to date. But what we thought we would do instead is, since all Cape Towns participate in school choice, we decided to look at their pages, how they inform the public, what the application process is, what the procedure. So we sort of borrowed and were inspired by the work of all the others' towns among us, and decided to spell it out a little bit clearly, the procedure. So that's why it went from five to 12 steps.
Thank you so much for the explanation. Finance Subcommittee, we discussed everything prior, prior to our budget. So that is complete there. Next, we have Superintendent's Report.
All right. Thank you. So starting off with some recognitions. So up on the, I'll start with, up on the screen, folks can see the, a group of students from Mr. Broat's various 3D art classes that were recognized by the Scholastic Art Awards. So I was actually fortunate enough to see some of these in their sort of creation stages, but just wanted to, you know, again, we have so many great things going on in DY, and all the different ways that students get to display their talents and their levels of excellence. So just wanted to let the committee see some of the, the great art that's being done at the high school. This, again, the 3D side of art. But these, all these students were honored by the Scholastic Art Awards up at the high school. Well, that was a little dark, it's a little hard to see, but. See a significant number in different types of mediums. Yeah. So I thought that was pretty, pretty outstanding. Additionally, the DY Honor Band, an advanced grade-five band, performed yesterday at the Providence Bruins game. It was a great opportunity for our students to have, you know, just another great performance opportunity and experience, as well as an opportunity for our amazing, or to showcase our amazing Dolphin talent. And then, last week, in this room right here, the DY Middle School had their STEM night. It was a great event for students and families to engage in learning centered around computer science, chemistry, and engineering. It was great, great turnout, and it was so nice to see our students, families, and staff all interacting in STEM learning. Moving on to the MSBA School Survey. So last week, as I previously mentioned, the MSBA was onsite for two days. So this was not in relationship to our invitation for eligibility for the MS, ME Small School. So every five years, the MSBA conducts a statewide school survey. It's actually been 10 years, because the last one was interrupted because of COVID, but every five years, they conduct a school survey of all the school buildings in Massachusetts. This helps inform their strategic planning and helps inform their long-term strategic budgeting. And essentially, the school survey is a very detailed look at each building, and the best way for me to summarize it is, we get us an Excel spreadsheet for every building that has about 350 questions on it, for every single building. And they, the MSBA sends a contractor out, well, first is an online interview that happens a couple of weeks ahead of time, and then they send somebody onsite. And both through questioning and through touring the building, they, we work collaboratively to get all their questions answered. So between Wednesday and Thursday last week, they did this building, they did Ezra Baker, Station Avenue, and the high school. Because ME Small's already been invited in, they didn't do that particular school. And I really just have to give a huge shout out to Steve Fosher. He did hours of legwork ahead of time to complete, have, have all the questions for this, because, I mean, they want everything from the amount of thermes that each building's using from its heat plant, to the kilowatts, to the number of classrooms, to the number of classrooms that are designated as science labs, that have heat, that, I mean, that have propane, that have running water, that have the number of windows, the square footage of the roof, the square footage of the gymnasium, like, the amount of detail that they want for every building is pretty, pretty significant. And he did all of it ahead of time. So he spent hours, again, for each building, did hours and hours of work ahead of time, so that when the contractor was onsite, the meetings went very, 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 very fast. And actually bought, I had like, two full days blocked out of my calendar, and he bought me hours of my days back. So he gets a huge shout out. And same for the principals. The principals had, like, each had like, four hours blocked out of their days, because, to support- out of their days, because, to, to support this and because of all of his work, he bought people a significant amount of time back. And then next, in the, the committee has in their packet a memo and then, this is like 30-something pages, 40-something pages, of the Articles of Agreement from the Collaborative. So, this is, just to give you a little bit of prep, next meeting, the new Collaborative Director Hope Hanscom will be here to give, to answer questions and give you a little bit of further context, but, so, you all may or may not know, well, you, you all do know that Phil's your representative to the Collaborative, but I also serve as the superintendent liaison to the Cape Cod Collaborative, because I don't have enough things that I volunteer for. So, the board voted at their last meeting to admit Plymouth as a new member to the Cape Cod Collaborative. So, that's the first step in the process. However, that board doesn't have the full authority to change the Articles of Agreement, which is needed in order to bring a new town into the, into the Collaborative. Each member school district needs to take a vote on whether or not, and it's a certain, I think it's 10 districts have to vote in the affirmative in order for it to ultimately pass. So, what you have is a memo, which sort of outlines this from the Collaborative's legal counsel, and then you have the amended Articles of Agreement. The only thing that's amended in here is any language pertaining to the member districts, and there's some like cleanup cosmetic stuff in here, but it's essentially allowing Plymouth to become a member of the Cape Cod Collaborative. So, in the meeting on the 17th, in the school committee's business, you will have a, a motion to consider whether or not to vote yes or no on allow, the changes to the article, so I gave it to you now to spend time, the Articles of Agreement time to consider about whether or not to ultimately do allow Plymouth into the, into the Collaborative. And again, Hope Hanscom, who's the new director, will be here, she's, you should see her calendar, she's gotta hit every single school committee meeting in the month of March, because this all has to be done by April 1st, I think, and to get it to the Department of Ed in time. So, I think that's about it, trying to look at my notes, see if there's anything else I had to mention. Articles, changes, no. I think that's it. Oh, all right.
Briefly.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that first word. There's 722 pages to read and you've got to.
The Collaborative Board of Directors is one member school district for the, for the board to meet, needs a quorum, and it's fortunate for the Zoom meetings that we can actually not have to drive, drive from Providence Town to Osterville in order to attend a meeting. So, attendance is high, relatively speaking, but it's also a comparison, a chance to talk with other school committee people about their home issues and their needs for the Collaborative. Collaborative answers a lot of difficult questions about costs and transportation for sped families and, and the appropriate academics needed for, for success. So, it's been my, my honor and my pleasure to have been on the board 20 years or more. But Paul Pitten, the executive director, was an incredibly organized individual and comes from a family of sped directors and sped teachers. He's turned it into quite a, quite a showpiece. And which are now, right now in our backyard, use the old LCM building, has been renovated. So, I did talk to the new director about having a tour by the DY School Committee membership to take a look at it at a convenient time. So, any questions, I'll be glad to pass them along. You notice I don't try to protect myself as the answer man, but rather the conveyor.
Thank you. Are you raising your hand or clicking your pen? Yes, Mr. Glenn.
Just, I understand this is a kind of a emergency type of addressing an issue, but do we go over a disagreement periodically? And the reason I ask this, because I know, like, the towns have asked about our regional agreement, and I know that that was supposed to be done periodically, every 10 years or something, but I'm wondering if this is also something that we do? Yeah.
The Collaborative Agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that question, because I'm, I'm just learning. I've only been serving as the liaison for, I don't know, since, so, I forget when I signed on, but for a little while. So, that would be a good question for Hope when she comes next week. She and, but I would also, she might need to get back to you, because she's, she's been doing it less time than I have. I do know, she mentioned at the last board meeting, that she, they will likely be back within a, probably a year or so. There's other things in, in the agreement that they'd like to address. I know the superintendents have had some conversations about, like, looking at some things in the agreement and that she's open to considering as a new director and working with her board on, so there's, there's some possibility that they'll be coming back, but this is like gonna, bringing Plymouth in is like a thing that they're working on right now, but looking at the overall agreement is something I know she has on her strategic, they're working on strategic planning, so it's something that they're, they're considering. So, there's a good chance within the next year or so, they'll be back with some other changes for the, for this committee and all the other committees to consider. So, but that would be a good question for, like, if this was supposed to be a regular review cycle, I haven't gotten into it with that level of detail. I read the section that applied to my job and some other sections, because I'm not a voting member, I don't have a vote, I just am there to bring information back to the superintendents.
Do we have that type of thing on the calendar in the future for our agreement with the towns?
We do not. I know a, oh, we have the agenda?
Not really on the agenda.
That's not on the agenda. The, the document we're looking at says it was revised in 2015, and this is the first revision since then in 10 years, so I, I don't know what their policy is for revision, but this specific one says it's 10 years old.
There, if I may add, there is a rather complicated series of monitoring and mentoring responsibility from the state to the set of collaboratives around, within the state. There's a necessary to compare notes and adhere to certain standards. As you might expect, DESE does it for traditional schools and the Board of Education or the Department of Education does it for collaboratives as well.
Yeah, so any, any other questions, I would, I would assume we can ask Hope next week prior to, to our vote. Next, we have School Committee Business as our consent agenda, which is the minutes of February 10th, 2025.
Move the consent agenda.
We have motion of second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, any abstained? Perfect, bill requisitions and payrolls, which are in front of me, calendars. Since we voted and have passed the budget, I would say we do not have a meeting on the 10th next week. So, on the 11th and the 13th, we have half-days for all schools, and those that do participate will have parent-teacher conferences. We have a school committee meeting on March 17th. Then looking ahead to April, on the 18th, a half-day for all schools, and the 21st to 25th will be April Vacation. Looking forward that far. And then I know we talked about the Advanced Band being yesterday in Providence Bruins. I know, I'm not sure about the high school, but I do know that the Dennis-Yarmouth Intermediate Band, similar to that band, is gonna be marching in the parade this Saturday. It's something that's really big, the intermediate school is looking to start, we know how great of a program the high school has, and they're looking to have their first event of marching, which I think they'll be on a float, but some of us wish we would be, and some of us may be on a float instead of marching, but it's great to see the continued stuff with our arts. And as I said, we do have dates in March that we'll make public for the two musicals for the intermediate school, the middle school, and I know we discussed the high school having there, so we'll make sure that all of those dates are published. And public comment. We have anyone looking to speak for public comment? Seeing none, or at the next, the last part?
I move re-adjourn.
Motion, any second, all those in favor, say aye.